I make a motion that we accept the monthly financial report.
All those in favor of approving the monthly financial report, signify by saying aye.
Motion carries.
If you look at your bank reconciliation for October, you'll see we have a reconciled balance of 10,125,000. You also noticed there a credit card timing error. Just, there was a timing error, something was posted, the date was wrong. It should work its way out this month. But we have, you'll see in the construction fund, we've got the 8.6 million.
What's the miscellaneous difference of 193.55?
Well, we had something come up and I think it's a munis error. I'm just waiting to see if it fixes itself.
Gotcha.
Cause it's, there was something weird about it and I'm waiting to see, I'm giving it one more month before I actually.
Dig, gotcha. Yeah, sometimes those things will just, they'll just work themselves out if you give them enough time, so.
for Ms. Schwartz and the high school staff as well as the students. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention. And there'll be some more information to follow. So, congratulations to the high school. Congratulations to the staff.
Student staff recognitions, that's basically the same as the bright spot. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mutis balance sheet.
Okay, if you look at your good, uh, mutis balance sheet, uh, general fund at the end of October has one point two million dollars in it. The fund two special revenue has a negative two thousand dollars in it. That's, we get reimbursements on our grants. The district activity fund, which is the school's district money, is forty-five thousand dollars. The student activity, which is based on their student activities that they have at their schools, is thirty-two thousand dollars. Capital outlay funds, you have forty-five thousand. Your building fund, which is your nickel, you're waiting on your nickel to come in. When your taxes come in, we should get our first payment in December. And then the remaining from the state usually comes in May. Your construction fund, we're still at eight million six hundred and forty thousand. Debt service, I transferred all those funds over there to pay those debt service amounts. We have five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in there. And our food service has a hundred and thirteen thousand three twenty.
Are we running close to budget given the changes that we've had to absorb with COVID?
On food service or what are you talking about?
Just generally on, on all of this, you know, food service and others because food service is very different this year.
Well, luckily with the CARES Act funds, they supplemented where we've had issues. We do a lot more cleaning. Maynard just received some cleaning carts for the Chromebooks and things like that. We've had CARES Act for. And with food service, with them allowing us to go with summer feeding, that is a higher, we get a higher amount back on each one of our meals. So, that's really helped because, and we, we've actually had to hire two staff and we're getting subs every Friday that, you know, so we can get the food on the buses and get it out to kids. So, we've been able to not drown because of the CARES Act funds that we've received. So, we're doing pretty good right now.
Do you, we do feel like after doing analysis and so forth that we will end the year where Lori has us budgets are better. It's very conservative budget that you approved in September.
And how many students are we feeding about right now?
I think it's seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty a day.
Excellent.
It's a lot.
It's a worthy effort.
Yeah, they're, they're working really hard.
Absolutely. And I guess under staff recognition should probably have really committed our cooks and our bus drivers and everyone in preparing that food for the, for the kids, you know, family resource, community ads, finance, just everyone's pitched in and done a really good job with it.
Yeah, I've, I've heard so many positive things about that program. So, for the cooks and the bus drivers and the aides that are getting things carried on and off the buses, I'm super pleased.
It's a process.
Sure.
There's not any more questions or discussion. I make a motion to approve the mutis balance sheet.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Monthly financial report.
Right. So, if you look at your monthly financial report and we go down to our totals. Which you can see our budget there of ten million la, this year last, last, hmm. Year-to-date is three point one million. This time last year was three point seven. We did not, last month they started tax collection in October. This month they're not starting until November. So, our first tax payment came in last year by this time, but it hasn't this year. So, that's, that's a large portion of that, which is right around four hundred thousand, three hundred to four hundred thousand that first month. So, that's your difference there. Sorry, don't look at the screen. On your expenditures, year-to-date is one point one. This time last year was one point seven. Like I said, we are being very conservative right now on our spending. Everything is going toward the students right now. So, if it's not food, then it's instruction or Chromebooks or all of those type of things. And our contingency is still four hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
I make a motion that we accept the monthly financial report.
I'll second.
I'll say.
All those in favor of approving the monthly financial report, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion can, uh, carries. Bank reconciliation.
If you look at your bank reconciliation for October, you'll see we have a reconciled balance of ten million one hundred and twenty-five thousand. You also notice there credit card timing error. Just, there was a timing error. Something was posted. The date was wrong. It should work its way out this month. But we have, you'll see in the construction fund, we've got the eight point six million.
What's the miscellaneous difference of one ninety-three fifty-five?
Well, we had something come up and I think it's a mutis error. I'm just waiting to see if it fixes itself.
Gotcha.
Because it's, uh, there was something weird about it. And I'm, I'm waiting to see, I'm giving it one more month before I actually.
Dig. Gotcha. Yeah. Sometimes those things will just, they'll just work themselves out if you give them enough time. So. It was just labeled oddly, you know, miscellaneous difference. So, I thought, you know, there's something hinky going on probably that she can't find or something. So.
Yeah. I think it's a payroll thing. I think I've cleared a payroll check. I don't need to. I couldn't find it this month.
Yeah, it'll probably catch up, I'm sure. I make a motion we approve the bank reconciliation.
I'll second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Cash flow statement.
All right. So, here's your cash flow statement. As you guys know, I replace the revenue expenditures from last year's to this year's and then I take out your bond funds. And it looks like without your bond funds in there, you have a reconciled one point four million in all of your funds added together. And I'm still projecting around eight hundred thousand at the end of the year. I think it's going to be more like seven fifty. But, but I'm conservative. So, there you go.
There's that every year.
She's usually pretty close though. You know, if she, if she expects it to be a lot higher, it ends up being a lot higher.
I know, April. I'm more remain optimistic than consider pessimistic.
I just know where she gets her numbers from. So, she says it might be a little less than me, you know. It might be close to that, but.
Ryan, if you want, go ahead and call me.
So, Greg will need a motion to prove.
I make a motion to approve the cash flow statement.
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving the cash flow state, obviously an aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Audit report.
Hang on just a second. All right. Go ahead, Ryan.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Well, I'm Ryan Laskin with Summers McCurry and Sparks. And we performed the audit for six thirty twenty twenty. And I'm going to go over, if you have any questions, I'd probably just hold off until the end based on how the Zoom calls go. If we, we can go, if I don't have an answer, I'll, I'll have to get back to Lori tomorrow. But I should be able to cover anything that you guys have. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Spencer and Lori for helping out with this year's audit. And we didn't have any issues getting through it, even dealing with everything that's going on. So, what I'd like to do is just hit on some highlights of the report. I think Lori's going to scroll to the pages that I mentioned. One thing I do want to bring to everybody's attention about this report, the version you have is draft. We have finalized the audit. But we are awaiting a final addendum by the federal government to tell us whether or not we need to perform additional procedures on any CARES Act money that came in before June thirty of twenty twenty. It was supposed to be released yesterday and we have yet to see it. So, what we did was we went ahead and finished the report. We don't expect that we'll have to do any additional procedures based upon the amount of money that you guys received. But the potential is there. And if it is, then, then we'll have to perform additional work and then re-release this audit report with any additional information in it that would be required. We don't expect any financials, we don't expect the financials to change at all. So. So, let me get started. Pages one, one and two of this report is the independent auditor's report. It is a clean opinion, unmodified. The one thing I'd like to bring to your attention is on page two, at the bottom, there's a difference in this year's report. It's a change in accounting principle. During the year, all the school boards across Kentucky had to adopt GAD B eighty-four, which deals with the fiduciary funds, which are your school activity funds. And they had to be pulled into the financial statements this year for the first time. So, that's just a little heads up and we'll go over that later on. Pages three through nine of this is the management's discussion analysis. What this is, this is the school board summary of the financial statements for this year. What I'd like to do is go through the financial statements that are in the management's discussion analysis versus our own financial statements because the ones in here offer a comparative to the prior year. So, on page five, this is your statement in net position. It's a government-wide financial statement. This is different than when you got to do your budgeting on. This includes debt as a liability and includes fixed assets. They're not expensed when you purchase them on these financials. So, compared to two thousand nineteen, your total assets increased by almost two point five million dollars. That was due to the new high school construction. Your deferred outflows, which are related to your pension and OPEB, or OPEB requirements, went up three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Your total liabilities for the year went up two million six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. And that was due to a new bond and OPEB and pension liability. And your deferred inflows and deferred inflows of resources, those again are related to your pension and OPEB liabilities. Your net position for overall decreased by two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. Page six is your summary of revenue and expenses. Your total revenue, your governmental, which is your first column there, the total revenue for governmental went down one point seven million dollars. And that was due to a decrease in state revenue resources. Your total expenses went down one million two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. And that was due to a decrease in instructional expenses and instructional support. Your business type total revenue went up fifty-nine thousand dollars. And your total expenses went down nineteen thousand dollars. So, there wasn't much change there. On page seven. For your fund lot financials, this is based on the basis that you do your budget. Your total general fund revenues went up only twenty thousand dollars when compared to the prior year. However, your total expenses went up four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. That was mainly due to an increase of on behalf of payments related to pension liabilities. And your special revenue, revenue went up three hundred and seven thousand dollars. And your expenses went up three hundred and seven thousand dollars. And all that is, that's your grant income that goes to fund whatever the grants go to cover. And the increase in the expenses were due to an increase in salaries and supplies allocated to the special revenues. Next, I'd like to go over the notes, page twenty-one through sixty-one of the notes. I'm only going to hit on a few, starting with page thirty-two. Page thirty-two, you're going to see new accounting pronouncements. Two of these pronouncements went into effect during this year. There's one in here, statement number eighty-eight, is related to certain disclosure related to debt. Didn't really have any effect on school boards this year, but it is effective going forward. GAD B number eighty-four, again, is related to the fiduciary activities. This is where we pulled the student school activity fund money into your general fund financials. And there was a prior period adjustment related to that. And we'll touch on that in a little bit. Up top, there's GAD B number eighty-seven. This is regards to leases. In the future, for years beginning after June fifteenth twenty twenty-one, so it'll be your school year ending June thirty twenty twenty-two. Any leases that the board has are going to have to be capitalized and recorded as a debt. It's due accounting pronouncement. And that's the way things are going to be going forward. I don't think that'll have much effect on you guys. You're going to see the larger numbers, but in turn, I mean, it's going to, you shouldn't see any operating effect. GAD B number ninety-six, subscription-based information. This has to do with primarily IT arrangements. I don't know too much about this, but from what I've heard, if you're paying a subscription for an IT service, then that service almost is going to have to be capitalized as an intangible asset. It's kind of similar to the leases. But that's something that will, uh, is going to affect you guys June thirty twenty twenty-three. And that's something that everybody's going to have to get their head wrapped around between that and this. So, those are your updates. Moving on to page thirty-four, you can see your capital assets on here. Overall, for the year, your capital assets increased five point two million dollars. And that was due to the construction of the high school.
Menifee Central.
Thirty-seven. Go ahead.
Menifee Central.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Thomas High School written down here. Page thirty-seven is your long-term debt note. You can see as of June thirty of twenty twenty, you guys have twenty-two million eight hundred and ninety-five in bonds that are payable. And those bonds will all be due as of twenty forty. Page forty-one is your long-term debt note, or is your retirement plan note. As you can see, the district's proportionate share of their net C R S pension liability is a little over four million dollars. And last year, that number was about three hun, or three million, three million four hundred thousand dollars. So, it's gone up about six hundred thousand dollars over the past year. Page forty-seven is your OPEB liability related to C R S. In the second paragraph on page forty-seven, you will see that the district's proportionate share.
Hang on, I'll get there.
You're good. You'll get there. There it is. On that second paragraph, second line right there at the top of your screen, the district's proportionate share is nine hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars. And last year, that was almost, well, it was nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. So, that number's actually gone down over the past year. And then on page fifty-two is your OPEB liability related to K T R S. And you will see on there, it is one million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And last year, it was two million one hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. So, that's gone down. And we've seen that, I mean, that, that's statewide. So, the OPEB liabilities have gone down statewide over the past year for all districts. Page sixty-one, there's a note on page sixty-one that lays out the prior period adjustment that had to be recorded to get the school activity fund recorded into the financial statements. Basically, at the end of June thirty of two thousand nineteen, the school activity funds had a fund balance of fifty thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars. So, an entry was made to record that as this year's beginning balance. And then you got it operated as normal. And going forward, all the activity in those student activity funds, the revenues and expenses will be reflected in your financials and your audit reports. Pages sixty-two through seventy are what's known as required supplementary information. It's all the detail behind the OPEB and the retirement liability calculations. All this information comes out of an actuarial, actuarially report that is provided by the state that covers all the districts. And we pull out your information and we put it in here. Page seventy-two. This is a schedule of what's known as non-major governmental funds. That's the balance sheet. And the next page shows you basically the income statement. And you can see on there, the second column is the school activity funds. First year of it being presented. You can see at the bottom, there was a prior period adjustment of fifty thousand six twenty-three. And that was the prior year ending amount being added to your financials this year. Pages seventy-three and seventy-four are the detail of the current year activity funds. We didn't have any balances at end of the year in a negative amount, which is good. We did have some comments that we'll go over in a few minutes. Page seventy-five is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. You can see on page seventy-six, there is debt to funds. And that is your, your CARES Act money that was spent before June thirty of twenty twenty. Page eighty-three. There were no current, uh, no current federal or state program findings during this year. Page eighty-four lists the, the finding that we had in the prior year. That finding was resolved this year. We did not have a repeat in that finding. Pages eighty-six through eighty-seven, this is a listing of our activity fund comments that we had during our audit this year. For the high school, we had some multiple receipt issues. We had a cash advance form that was not completed correctly. And the, um, the principal's combining budget was not completed timely. On Menifee Elementary and Both Elementary, they both had the same comment about the budget not being completed timely. And Both Elementary had an additional comment with regards to the PTO not turning in their budget worksheet. With regards to all of last year's comments, they were all corrected. We didn't have any repeat comments during this year's audit. And that concludes my recap of this year's audit. I don't know, Lori should have got a governance letter that needs to be distributed to all board members. In that governance letter, it outlined any issues we had during the completion of the audit, any issues dealing with Lori. We had no issues. And we had nothing else to report in that letter, but it is required to be provided to each board member. So, if anybody has any questions, I can find the answer.
Ryan, we appreciate the services of Summers McCurry and Sparks. I know that you all have done a very thorough audit. Appreciate the work of the finance staff and the work that they've done. And, and very appreciative of the in-depth work that you all have done with this audit. Chairman, if you have no questions, it probably wouldn't hurt to go ahead and get approval of the audit report. Realizing, Ryan, this is draft, is that correct?
That one is a draft. I mean, we have a final copy of it. And it, it is only subject to change if the federal government says we have to do additional work. If not.
Okay.
Do you want to make a motion pending federal changes?
There you go, Man.
I'll second Matt.
I move that we approve our report.
We lost you, Matt.
Right. I would just, I would just repeat you all at once. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. We couldn't hear your motion.
All right. I move that we accept the draft audit report for the fiscal year ended June thirty twenty twenty, pending any federal amendments or changes.
And I'll second Matt's motion.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Ryan. We'll talk to you later.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, PDSA report.
Hey, Ms. Pelfrey, if you wouldn't care, kind of give us an update of where we are with participation and anything else with support services right now.
Okay, so our first report went to K D E for our participation percentages. And our participation was running between ninety-one and ninety-two percent district-wide. And the next time that that happens, we'll be looking at the dates of October first through the end of December. And we do hope that our percentage has increased by then. We're taking lots of measures to make sure that we're reaching out to students as we have been all along. But our administrators and teachers are doing everything they can to reach out to our students. We've actually conducted thirty-one home visits just this week. And, you know, trying to offer all the support that we can to our students, whether it be technology or instructional support, or whatever they may need in order to be successful with virtual learning. And we know that it is difficult for a lot of people. And so, we're trying to offer as much support as we can. And I'm trying to stay connected to our families as much as we can also. Family Resource Center is working very hard to try to provide. Uh, Family Resource Center is working very hard and to try to provide, uh, support as well. And our coordinators are, uh, working on giving out Thanksgiving meals right now, and I think we're up to thirty-three, uh, families and that we've supported with Thanksgiving meals. And a lot of this, uh, the food's been donated by staff members, community members, and we definitely appreciate all of that support. Uh, we're up to a hundred students on our Angel Tree program. And, you know, we encourage everyone to, uh, adopt an angel from our Angel Tree. Our students and families definitely depend on that as well during this time that, like I said, we're trying to offer as much support as we can and trying to stay connected to our families in any way that we can, um, to encourage participation and, uh, make sure that the students and their families are getting everything that they need.
Where are the angels? Where's the Angel Tree angels?
Um, you can reach out to either Melanie Golden or Jessica Hill, and, um, they will help assign you information.
Thanks.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Adams.
Okay, uh, very short agenda item as far as consent agenda items. Of course, you got your claims, uh, uh, the grant for the high school for AP teachers, uh, the stipends for those needs to be approved, uh, to pay those teachers that teach AP classes. Part of that Kentucky Science and Technology Corporation grant. Uh, we've already received some non-resident contracts from, uh, adjacent counties in Morgan and Wolf County for twenty-one, twenty-two school year, that is for any and all students. First Kit, Kit's offer of assistance for twenty twenty-one. Uh, that is, they will send us, I think it's approximately sixty-seven hundred dollars, and, uh, we have to put sixty-seven hundred dollars in to match. Uh, also, Ms. Brewer, Ms. Blackburn, as well as other folks, or work, Ms. Roberts, uh, are working very diligently on two grants, Kentucky Comprehensive Literacy Grant, which would essentially be a continuation of the Striving Readers Grant. And then for a new grant from Minifee Central for the Twenty-First Century Grant, like we currently have at Bots Elementary. Uh, also approve a partnership with Gateway Add, it's called Operation Gateway. This will be to post the innovative readiness training with the U.S. Department of Defense, which would kind of be providing some free healthcare services to our students, uh, in the community, uh, just a variety of different things. I will know more about that in December, but it's an excellent opportunity for our communities. This will be a regional thing with, uh, round, um, Morgan Elliott, Bath and, and Minifee Counties. Also, job description for the district technology coordinator to amend that job description to reflect instead of having a college degree, but put preferred, college degree preferred. And, uh, prove a scoreboard sponsorship from Woodman of the World for Minifee Central. Uh, this is through the work with Ms. Pelfrey. Uh, we've, she's been working with, uh, Woodman of the World in Morgan County. Uh, they, uh, are generously donating or willing to donate upon your laws approval eighty-seven hundred dollars to put a sponsorship on those two scoreboards at Minifee Central. Uh, that is what it was costing the district was eighty-seven hundred, and they're willing to, uh, pay the entire amount. So, uh, that, that does need board approval because it's over fifteen hundred dollars. And I do want to commend the work of Ms. Pelfrey for going out and, uh, slisting that, uh, for the, uh, school district. Uh, it was just through, it wasn't really slisting, but it just through a general conversation. Fundraisers, uh, Fall Festival for Minifee Elementary and Conde High Sales for the high school. And then to finalize getting the twenty-eight thousand dollars for the Safe Schools Grant. Uh, we've already been approved for sixteen thousand. We just need to amend that, uh, uh, am, am, amend that where we can request the additional twelve thousand dollars. And those are your consent agenda items.
Any questions or discuss?
No one. Who's approving a consent item?
Second.
All those approving the consent items, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, no discussion and approval, personnel notification.
Oh, sorry.
Hey, uh, I'd like to mention reflect, uh, the hiring of Mr. Maynard Stevens, District Technology Coordinator. Uh, Carly Willoughby is softball coach, Ashley Glass is cheerleading sponsor, and Christian Rogers is instructional assistant at Minifee Elementary.
You have one resignation?
I did not see that, Greg.
I'm sorry. Oh, Amy Fair.
And resignation of Amy Fair, Instructional Assistant at Minifee Elementary.
Uh, monthly community report.
I don't have anything.
Yeah, you did.
I did? Well, hang on, I gotta find it.
You just had it on the screen.
No, that's, that's the high school.
Oh, okay, sorry.
All right, uh, KSBA scholarship letter.
Okay, just, uh, verification that they have received our two scholarship applicants from Minifee County. And hopefully they'll be, uh, hopefully we'll be fortunate enough that they will receive that scholarship.
Principal update.
Okay, our first principal update that we have is from Ms. Schwartz. Uh, graduating, uh, Minifee County High School students and staff for being named a bright spot in Kentucky education by the Pritchard Committee during the years of two thousand and eleven to two thousand and nineteen, or two thousand and eighteen, where all students performed better than expected in transitioning to post-secondary. Uh, she does have scheduled, and we will proceed with this. Uh, there will be one-on-one individual appointments for FATHS tonight. That will be on the third of December from four-thirty to six-thirty. And, uh, please call or contact Ms. Stacy, uh, Lewis, uh, guidance counselor, uh, to make an appointment. Targeted services and ESS are ongoing and have been successful in student, supporting student needs. We've had approximately twenty-five students with one-on-one appointments this week, and staff are engaging in professional learning, targeting student engagement virtually November thirteenth. And KDE provided, uh, professional learning for performative assessment and engagement tools. And as you'll note above, Ms. Lewis, uh, recently, uh, got married, and I think her last name is pronounced Fulgoney, but Ms. Pelfrey, you may want to help me with pronunciation of that last name.
I believe you're correct.
All right. That's the high school report.
Uh, site-based minutes.
Minifee Elementary report, Greg.
I'm, I'm sorry, sorry.
Uh, Ms. Means has observed Rovr certified staff, uh, provided feedback for the virtual platform. All teachers continue to reach out to students and provide data for, uh, multi-tiered systems, uh, tracking. Ms. Abney, Ms. Williams, and Ms. Roberts are currently providing feedback to teachers for their Google Classrooms and working with central office staff for the Twenty-First Century Grant from Minifee Central. All portions of this comprehensive school improvement plan for both schools are completed at this point. All fifth graders will have virtual colonial camp on Tuesday, November the twenty-fourth. Middle school basketball team had twelve games scheduled, but have only played three this, at this point. The team managed to did, managed to get in sixteen practices. Our entire staff is working very diligently to make the best possible experience while learning virtually.
Uh, thank you. Now, site-based minutes, anybody getting questions or discussions on that? Not, we're down to communication and sharing.
Uh, just to kind of give you an update, of course, you are aware that the governor did issue an executive order yesterday. Uh, that is affecting our schools just a little bit, as you all know. Uh, middle school and high school now, uh, must continue with virtual learning through January the fourth. The elementary school, uh, can come back into session on December the seventh. If the county is not in the red category, we will be monitoring that and reviewing that, uh, throughout the course of the next couple of weeks, uh, to see if it is feasible to potentially come back for the couple of weeks before Christmas. But we will have input from, uh, administration and teachers and, uh, and, uh, district support staff to see if that is feasible. Uh, it also affects our athletics some. Uh, high school boys' basketball season and girls' seasons have been, all winter sports have been pushed back to January the fourth, with practices can start on December the fourteenth. However, coaches can come in and schedule individual drills with each of the student, or each of the student athletes as deemed appropriate, but must follow the CDC guidelines for social distancing. And also, uh, we got received a piece of good news earlier. Uh, some of you were on the board when we had to do a big payout with Kentucky School Board Association for some insurance claims that several, that all districts had held KSBA for insurance. Uh, the claim was finally settled, and we are receiving a refund back from KSBA of around seven thousand dollars. And also, uh, KIMI, uh, where through our unemployment insurance, uh, where we've decreased that and, and worked with our, uh, getting our number of job-related in, inju- injuries down, we received about six thousand dollars from them. So we received about thirteen thousand dollars this week from our insurance providers, uh, based upon, uh, safety and, and, uh, also other, uh, things that have been going on in the district. So those are the items that I have. I'll keep you informed as we go through, and I'm going to check the Facebook and see if we've had any comments, and at this point, we've not had any questions or comments. And I did send Lori some pictures of the school, and, uh, if you would give her just a moment and let her take a look at those just to get the community updated with.
Do you want these? Okay, uh, Mr. Spencer and I went up Wednesday and took these pictures. They'd started on, can you see them?
Yeah.
Okay, they had started on the siding, and now we are on the dark side of the building right before it went up, the sun went over. But, uh, it's, it's a little dark, but you can really tell how that looks. And you can see my finger in there, so I was doing pretty good there. Um, this is your new playground.
Oh, cool.
Nice, I like it.
The pictures are deceiving, it's a little big.
It's a thirty feet tall, I believe.
Um.
Slidesflation on top will keep airplanes from hitting us.
It has three slides, a, uh, rope ladder on this side, a fire, um, pole, oh, a fireman's pole, and steps going up it, uh, you can't see, it's got a kind of a ladder over here, but this is a totally enclosed area where they could go across to either tower. Um, you have over here will be a bench swing. And then, let's see. There it is in the sun, it's a little bit brighter there.
Oh, neat.
Um, there's the swing set, you can see that. Um, let's see. There's one of the benches, you have two benches on there, you've got one on this side and one on the backside. And there's your swing set. I think that's it on this one, hang on just a second.
Lori, I sent you an email that shows the surfacing.
Yeah, well, I lost it, Mr. Spencer, I don't know where it is. There you go.
That's a rubberized surface, and you, as you can see, Lori, with what I reviewed with them this afternoon, they had, they did have about a four-inch drop coming off that concrete, and now they feathered it in to where it not be a, uh, stumping of a toe or a crilling of an ankle. And then that's got one more coat to go over it.
Yep. And it.
Oh, it's nice.
That's all four in place, and that was through a grant with, uh, Kentucky, uh, Crump Rubber Grant. Uh, that will, uh, that is, will not move, and therefore you don't have to worry about going to buy the mulch all the time and making sure that the playground is not meeting the specifications with the mulch depth.
Let me see if I can find the better siding one. Okay, let's see if I can get that, if I can share again. There, um, Alan gave a, sent us this one. It's on the siding section that they had completed, and if I can figure out how to zoom. Yeah, I can. Um, you can see all the trim around it and stuff and how neat it's going to look.
Oh, yeah, it looks nice.
Really sharp.
Lock those doors.
It, it matches, it really matches all that beautiful brick and all that beautiful siding, just throw that door right on there.
Yeah, well, it, it is saving on heating, and the thing about it is we do have four portable heat, heating units in there, and I do want to commend Delta Gas. Uh, all of our utilities have been very good to work with. Uh, Delta Gas, we've got actual, they're running those heaters off of natural gas, which is saving us a lot of money instead of having to do propane heaters there. So Daryl Baker and that staff, and then, uh, Jimmy Trimble with Clark Energy, uh, a lot of folks that have, they've really went to bat for the school district to try to save us money.
Yes.
And I know I'm missing some people, but I'll get them later.
There's been significant change, uh, not only on the outside of the building, but the inside of the building. The drywall is all in, uh, there's lots of painting, they actually have painted the door facings, and they're a really pretty rub bronze color, and it's, uh, with those white walls, it looks really, really good.
I, I, I would say before we close, if you, any of you'd like a visit, just send me a text message or whatever, and I'd be glad to take you up. And, uh, Lori will be a personal guide, she knows more about it, and she can tell you every room. And, uh, just let me know on that, but it's the, those four heaters in there are maintaining a temperature of fifty-five degrees, and it's not using that much gas at all right now. Of course, I know the weather's been a little bit warmer, but that goes to show you, once we do get everything tightened up, I think our energy bill, that's going to be a very energy-efficient building. So Chairman, that's all I have as far as communication and sharing.
Anybody have anything else? No, I'll make a motion to adjourn. I have a second. Uh, I'll favor of adjourning, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, everybody have a good evening.
Everybody have a happy.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Have a good Thanksgiving, thank you all.
Appreciate y'all.